So there's this really cool sort of dynamic that we've created here where it's educational but entertaining at the same time.
So come on down and check out the Backstreet Boys experience. It's your chance to sing or send a message to them while experiencing this boy band phenomenon.
The exhibit runs until September 2nd. More info at gramymuseum.org. Well, from pop to hip-hop, another photo exhibit highlights the musical artists and the photographers who not only helped shape hip-hop culture as we know it today, but also impacted politics, culture, and social movements around the world.
It's hard to believe, but hip-hop is now 40 years old. It's actually middle-aged, but it is still as vibrant as ever, and this exhibit captures that. For example, Salt n' Pepper when they first started out, or how about Tupac or Snoop Dogg before they became legendary mega-artists.
I refer to this as like the Mona Lisa of hip-hop. The photographer talks about how he wanted to portray Biggie as a king.
Notorious B.I.G., Cardi B, the one and only Beyoncé, and Jay-Z. The exhibit Contact High: A Visual History of Hip-Hop takes us down memory lane in the vast and varied history of hip-hop, but it also includes its newest and greatest current artists.
You have Kanye's first photo shoot, Wu-Tang's first cover shoot.
But Vicky Toback, curator of the exhibit Contact High and author of a book by the same name, makes it clear that this visual show is as much about the photographers who captured hip-hop history as it is about the artist who created its music.
A lot of times, you know, the photographers weren't professionally trained per se, but they were part of the culture. And so when hip-hop started, you know, in the Bronx in the 70s, they were right there. Hip-hop wasn't on the radio yet. You had to go to parks, roller rinks, you know, local DJ spaces to even hear it. And it was just this, you know, music of everyday peoples.
L.A., by the way, has its own historic corner in the exhibit.
You know, you can see in the photos this moment, right, where L.A. kind of comes into its own. It looked different, you know, it had like the white tees, the Dickies, the, you know, the car culture, the tattoo culture, the lowrider culture, like that was very much an L.A. signature.
Rest in peace, Nipsey.
Pictures like that of the late Nipsey Hussle capture that L.A. moment, and there are so many L.A. moments.
You know, I love when you can see the neighborhoods and really the places that made L.A. hip-hop.
Altogether, more than 100 historic photos capturing iconic hip-hop artists. Not bad for a musical tradition few thought would last, but last it has, influencing many other types of music.
Hip-hop always just portrayed itself as being raw and real and speaking truth to power. People connect to that. Fast forward now to it being a dominant, you know, global phenomenon.
The exhibit at the Annenberg Space for Photography stays open until August 18th of this year, and it's free. The South L.A. community got together to rededicate a beloved neighborhood park. From carnival games, dunk tank, face painting, and lucha libre wrestlers, it was fun for the entire family.
Let's give a big round of applause for South Park 2.0. Amen. Today, we're unveiling a new and improved South Park.
I don't know if everybody realizes, but this year is 120 years this park has been in existence. That is a long time. This is one of the first parks in the city of Los Angeles.
L.A. Times called it the Monte Carlo of Los Angeles minus the wicked jingle of the coin.
I live right here in the neighborhood, so I've been aware of this park since the late 50s.
Our parents used to bring us here when we were kids. I haven't seen it look this good in years.
Our generation isn't the generation that just holds things together. We're the generation that are going to create, we're going to rehabilitate. This will be one of the examples of what can happen when a community comes together with a vision.
One. Two.
My message to the community is, these weren't dollars that Kern Price or Eric Garcetti had, these are your tax dollars. And because we're spending your tax dollars in your community, now it's your responsibility. Keep it clean, keep it safe, and use it. A park loves to be loved.
Investment is not just in the grounds and in the grass and in the trees, it's an investment in the people who live in this community.
Put your best foot forward, every individual. Put your best foot forward.
I'm just praying and hoping that they upkeep, stay up, and that we all come together as one to do whatever we need to do to benefit the neighborhood.
We must really love one another, we must love our communities, and do everything we can to keep it safe and clean.
There was even more family fun at the city's Earth Day celebration, as folks learned about conservation and even brought home some trees.
I think in our home, for example, the importance of recycling, the importance of making sure we can conserve water to make sure that our planet could survive for generations to come.
Recycling the most basic of things, papers, cans, at home, that's something that everyone can do. Ensuring that nothing gets thrown on the street that will contaminate not just our water, but it'll blight our public spaces. We all want things to look clean and beautiful.
I conserve water and I reuse and recycle items. And to help the earth, I conserve water and take short showers.
I recycle whenever I can, conserve water.
Earth Day should actually be every day.
Councilmember Paul Corretts gets a special honor, a new Green Deal is announced by the mayor, and the city's first two-way bike lanes are coming to downtown L.A. All this in City Beat. As Earth Day celebrations and education continue in Los Angeles, Councilmember Paul Corretts was honored for his 30-plus years of forward-thinking environmental policy and action. His contributions are almost too many to list, as Councilmember Mike Bonnet pointed out at a recent surprise ceremony in City Council.
Mr. Corretts, would you please come up and join us?
I really appreciate this. I don't know what to say. This means a lot to me, something I care so much about. Save our planet and save our species, save our wildlife, and keep L.A. and the rest of the world as it should be. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, congratulations.
And along those lines, Mayor Eric Garcetti unveiled L.A.'s Green New Deal, a plan designed to greatly expand Los Angeles' strong commitment to renewable energy, resulting in a cleaner, safer Los Angeles for decades to come. As use of bicycle transportation continues to grow, Councilmember Jose Huizar unveiled the city's first two-way bike lane in downtown L.A. The improvement is designed in part to allow residents easier access to downtown's historic core. Las Villas celebrates a brand-new playground, thanks to the Department of Wrecker Parks and Councilmember David Rue.
All right, we're gonna get started, because I honestly do not want to take these three-year-olds on. I really want to thank everyone for joining us today for the opening of this very new playground. This is what a park is supposed to be, an open space for all, and of course, especially for our young children. What do you think?
There was a call from the community in Las Villas. They needed a playground, and this is like the newest and greatest addition to Griffith Park.
We're so happy to be celebrating this amazing event, this incredible playground, and we definitely look forward to welcoming more spaces like this in the Las Villas community.
Playgrounds are the very first introduction of our kids to the parks. Our goal is, is when we get the kids coming into the park through the playground, then we're able to introduce them to the other really magical pieces of the park system.
I always like to cite the saying that we need more green time and less screen time.
This means so much to me, because when I was growing up as a child, we lived in a two-bedroom, 700-square-foot apartment, and we had no front yard or backyard, and it was parks, it was public parks, in particular Griffith Park where I came to play.
Get on the Do Good Bus and do some good. A citywide open firehouse celebration kicks off, and get ready to move to the beat as Summer of Salsa returns. All this and Things to Do. If you've been wanting to get involved in your community but haven't been sure where to start, then just hop on the Do Good Bus. You'll meet like-minded folks for a day of games, fun, and a volunteer opportunity at a mystery location. Try out the Do Good Bus on Saturday, May 11th from 8:15 a.m. The latest pack of do-gooders board the bus at Echo Park Lake on 751 Echo Park Avenue. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. You're invited to bring the entire family for the LAFD Fire Service Day 2019, a citywide open firehouse celebration. Get to know your local fire crews in this 2019 LAFD Fire Service Day, happening Saturday, May 11th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. To locate your nearest fire station, visit lafd.org/station/station/results. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes invites you to Summer of Salsa, a free concert series held at this historic open-air venue. Gracing the stage on May 10th will be Ricardo Lembo and Makina Loca. Summer of Salsa, featuring Ricardo Lembo and Makina Loca, takes place Friday, May 10th, beginning at 6 p.m. For more info, visit lapca.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Please take their seats. If everybody could please take their seats. Today is Friday, May 10th. Want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall in this council meeting. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and the public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Plumenfield, Bonham, Buscino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Corretts, Kirkory, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Ruth Smith, and Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves. Corretts seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Smith moves, and Ofero seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 through 6. There are items for which public hearings have been held. A housing committee report has been circulated for item 6, and is now before council for consideration. In regards to that particular housing committee report, there was a typographical error in item 23, and the last amount referenced should be $1,721,563.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Item 7 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on. Let's hold those items, and then we'll move on.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations, items called special, or general public comment for matters not on council's agenda.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue.
Mr. President, could I reconsider item number 6 and hold that?
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration for item 6. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we'll hold that for you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Sadio, are you ready for your presentation? Then the floor is yours. I see, Mr. Sadio, you have a small crowd with you this morning. Mr. President, let me, first of all, tell you how much I admire your political leadership and the skills that you bring to this council every single day. I don't think Councilmember Smith can recall this type of leadership, bringing a community together. And I say that because you are the genius behind the Human and Civil Rights Committee and the ordinance that we have put forth. And so today, we're here to recognize one element of that broad vision of yours. And I say that at a time of spectacular time in the body politic of this nation. It is just amazing to see what is taking place in Washington. We are in a constitutional crisis. We are in a crisis of leadership, and more so, we're in a crisis of vision. We are in a conflict about how this nation goes forward. And if this nation wants to go forward embracing its immigrant heritage, looking to employ its diversity, seeking to have shared prosperity, it only needs to look to Los Angeles, it only needs to look to your leadership, and it only needs to look to the day labors. Day labors are here today as we proclaim the day of the day labor. Because every single day in this city, and we heard yesterday how important the tourism is to our economy, how important the service industry is to our economy, but the heavy lift in that economy is done by an immigrant worker. Every day, immigrant workers take care of other people's children, other people's parents, other people's homes are maintained by an immigrant worker. Every day in this city, manufacturing is done by an immigrant worker. Every day in this city, entrepreneurs begin new businesses in this city, and they begin as day labors. Day labors are the micro, the most micro of microenterprises in this city. And so you see them all the time, and as long as there's a need for work in this city that is informal, but meriting dignity and respect, there is a day labor to do that work. And so we're very proud to be here in this historic moment. This city arguably could say that every day is the day of the day labor, but we are here today with their organizations, Caresen, the Caresen Day Labor Center, and Idepska. And you know, in governance, Mr. President, a lot of times we don't see the hard work of the staff. We did something earlier in the week on behalf of renters, and Ana Ortega did an incredible job to bring renters and the apartment association together to get a resolution. And I don't doubt that this struggle for day labor is in the resolution, which was a major part of your tenure at the County of Los Angeles with Supervisor Burke, has your fingerprints on it, if we look back on the record and who did the work. And so let me begin by introducing the speakers. Alejandro Morales from Caresen, please. Welcome. Let's give her a round of applause, and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Alexandra Morales, and I'm Policy Manager for Caresen. Today, we're here to thank the city, but more than anything, to uplift and thank the Jornaleros for their contributions, not only as workers and a big integral part of the day, of the workforce. work for the city of Los Angeles, but also for being part of our communities, being our families, being our neighbors. And that means that they are an integral part of the community. We're here also today to remind the city and to also ask our community members across the city of Los Angeles to continue to stand with Jornaleros and Jornaleras, not just on the day of the day labor, but every single day. That means that we must continue to ensure that we're advancing and developing the protections and support of our Jornaleros. And right now, two of the issues are, one, issues around wage theft, and the other, ensuring that our immigrant community continues to be protected, and that means continuing and advancing the development of the L.A. Justice Fund. Today, we're here to uplift the Jornaleros. We're here to celebrate, and tomorrow, we'll be back here, working alongside our Jornaleros to continue to uplift and support their Jornaleros and Jornaleras of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Let me introduce Eduardo Sinay.
Welcome, Eduardo.
Buenos dias. En nombre de nuestros compañeros jornaleros, les agradecemos mucho a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles por habernos dado el nombramiento del día del jornalero, el 3 de mayo. Soy una persona jornalera desde hace 30 años, y gracias a mi trabajo y al esfuerzo que he puesto diario, en el diario vivir, si necesito trabajar los siete días de la semana, lo he hecho. Pero de esa manera, he sacado adelante a mi familia, a mis hijos, orgullosamente. Una persona que me siento muy orgulloso de pertenecer a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Gracias.
I'm gonna try to recap. I'm gonna try to recap. What is the number of Eduardo Sinay?
Hi, Eduardo Sinay. He would like to thank for all the support that he has received at City Council and working with the different organizations. And he's very thankful because working as a...
Keep going.
Okay, because working as a laborer, he has been able to feed his family and to feel dignity doing this work every day. That was just a recap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Diaz, por favor.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Carlos Diaz, miembro jornalero del centro de Harvard City, IDEPSCA.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Diaz, and I'm with IDEPSCA.
Del cual me siento orgulloso de pertenecer y agradecerle al Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
I'm a very proud member, and I'm here also to thank the city of Los Angeles.
El haber tomado en consideración el día del jornalero este 3 de mayo.
And now, I understand that May 3rd is the day of the labor, and I'm very thankful for that.
Del cual nos sentimos orgullosos y estamos dispuestos a la lucha para que sea reconocido nacionalmente.
And we're very proud of that, and we're ready to put up a fight so this becomes a National Labor Day. Thank you.
Y lo cual decirles que estamos al servicio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
And I also would like to remind you that we are at your service, at the service of the beautiful city of Los Angeles.
Okay. We just can't go without that. And now, for the Executive Director, the leader, Megan Ortiz.
Megan. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Megan Ortiz, Executive Director of the Institute of Popular Education of Southern California, IDEPSCA. I'm standing here, and I'm looking behind, and I have literal tears in my eyes. This has been a two-year struggle of conversations, and we're so grateful for Councilmember Sadio for working with us to make sure that this historic day happened. As far as we know, this is the first city in the country to declare Day of the Day Labor, Dia del Jornalero. And especially now, right, when we talk about what does it mean to have a city that has a Day of the Day Labor, right, I want to thank, obviously, the council president for opening this up and making this possible and laying the groundwork, as Councilmember Sadio said. I want to thank the council members who are here today, who have day labor centers in their districts, right? We have met with all of you. We fight year after year, and it's become less of a fight, and we're grateful that the day labor centers have continued to be open and continue to serve and work with in defense of the day laborer community. So thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Buscaino, Councilmember Weezer, and all of the city council who continues to support day labors across the city of Los Angeles. But we know, right, that the fight is not over, as my compañera said, right? Today, we are here, yes, to celebrate. We are continuing to fight. Councilmember Corretts knows the fight that we have against wage theft. In just the last eight months of this fiscal year, just in four day labor centers, we've marked $60,000 in wages stolen from day laborers, okay? So, and that's just a small fraction of what we see. So we know that together with the Economic and Workforce Development Department, the City of Los Angeles, but most importantly, with each and every one of these compañeros that stand behind me today, we're going to continue to fight to make sure that day laborers, whether they sleep on the streets or sleep in apartments, whether they're in a day labor center or in a Home Depot parking lot, are defended and are honored for being part of the fabric of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. President, I know that you weren't sure that this becomes a reality, and so I want to present this to the day laborers.
Mr. Sadio, if I could just quickly say, when I first came to this building, many of these offices were doing everything that they could to figure out a way to shut down, to close out, to eliminate day labor centers, and this is like full circle, is here we are today, recognizing and honoring. Let's give them one more round of applause. You've done a lot of hard work, and you've come a long way. Before I recognize Mr. Rue, I think we have some very special visitors with us today, and maybe Ms. Rodriguez can tell us who these special people are.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Would you guys all rise? Today, we have students from an outstanding school in my district in Pacoima, from Telfair Elementary School, led by their incredible principal, my dear friend, Mr. Jose Razo. They're here visiting us from Pacoima. If we can please give them a round of applause.
Yeah, give them a round of applause. You guys look great.
This group was here today to join us in advocating for increased after-school funding that is so critically needed, and many of these youth are participants in the L.A.'s Best After-School Program, the Mariachi Program. Clearly, this isn't just part of their school uniform. This is reflective of their incredible gifts, and we've got the Mariachi Los Cachorros. And also, many of them are also part of the phenomenal group that we had on display as part of Latino Heritage Month, the El Grito Celebration that we had here back in September with Los Tigres del Telfair. And so we're so glad that you all were here to join us today. Thank you so much for sharing your gifts and your talents with us this morning. You were incredible. And again, to all the incredible leadership at Telfair Elementary School, which has made an indelible mark in the community of Pacoima, I thank you, and thank you, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall.
I'd like to now recognize Mr. David Rue with some very special guests.
We are gathered here today to celebrate National Nurses Week, and to celebrate the tens and thousands of nurses...
Let's give a round of applause. National nurses.
And to celebrate the tens and thousands of nurses and health care workers who keep our city thriving. I'm joined today by the United Nurses Association of California President Denise Duncan, Vice President Charmaine Morales, and Treasurer Deidre Castillo, and a very special guest, Assemblymember Lorena Gonzalez. Nurses are the unsung heroes of our city's health. It's nurses who most frequently see patients. It is nurses who build relationships with communities, and it is nurses who work day in and day out to see that everyone has access to care, no matter how much money you earn or what language you speak. My mother worked as a nurse when she first immigrated to this country, which kept our family afloat, and she was the first, she was my first example and role model of dedicated service to the public. Our city has one of the largest and most diverse nursing communities in the nation, dating back to Biddy Mason. Born a slave, Biddy found her freedom in California and employed years of knowledge in herbal medicine and midwifery to become Los Angeles's first professional nurse. Here in Los Angeles, from her home just a few blocks away, Biddy delivered hundreds of babies, risked her life to save others during the smallpox epidemic, and helped found the first AME church of Los Angeles. She was the most successful businesswoman and arguably the first African-American woman who owned land in Los Angeles, and her success was only, only increased her passion and commitment of service to others. She fed and clothed the poor, visited prisoners, and opened a daycare center for black children. She set a legacy of courage, strength, and service that continues to this day with the Los Angeles nurses. As a kid watching my mom, I saw firsthand how hard nurses work every day. That is why I saw it important to have organizations like UNAC fighting not just for nurses' rights and safety, but for, but to fight for higher quality care for everyone. It is such an honor to stand here with them today and to invite up another great champion for nurses in our state capitol, Assemblywoman Lorena Gonzalez.
Welcome, Assemblymember. Welcome.
Thank you. It is my deepest honor to be here, not only as an Assemblymember, a former labor leader, somebody who had the chance to actually sit with these men and women at the bargaining table for years, but as a daughter of a nurse. I watched my mother for 40 years go to work every single day to take care of other people, to be able to provide for her patients, to be able to provide for her family, and work hard, hard to get a union in her workplace so that she could have the basics and the necessities to be able to provide for her own children. And so there is no better honor for me on this Mexican Mother's Day than to stand with nurses from UNAC and to honor their accomplishments, to honor all nurses, not only in the city of Los Angeles, state of California, but throughout the nation, and to thank Councilmember Rue for bringing this forward and honoring these great nurses of UNAC.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Next, I'm honored to invite a president of the United Nurses Association of California, which is fighting every day for better care across our state, and that's Denise Duncan. Denise.
Welcome, Madam President. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here. This is the most emotional time I ever have, speaking about the profession that I love. And we're thankful and recognize the power of the people in this room and in this community to protect nurses that fight for us every single day to have an honorable wage and pension. You may not know this, but it wasn't until the '70s that nurses were recognized as part of a National Nurses Day and National Nurses Week. That has been in my lifetime as a nurse, but each and every day, nurses across this country have to fight so that they will not be part of a people, a group of people that retire at the poverty level. We are very fortunate that we have a union, that we have activists in this community that fight for our nurses. But we do have a group with us here today that is under attack, and that is our St. Francis Medical Center Nurse Group that is here representing their hospital. If you don't know about St. Francis Hospital, you should. It resides in Linwood, California, in a lower socioeconomic area. It is a trauma hospital. It is a hospital that is pivotal to that community, and it is going through a bankruptcy. The nurses' wages, pension, and all the benefits they have enjoyed are under attack, and we are fighting for them to this day so that they will be able to maintain the benefits and wages and to continue to provide the high quality of care that the city, the patients, and those family members and community members enjoy at that Linwood Medical Center. I also want to share with you that this is a group of nurses that gives back to the community, and it is part of our mission, it's part of our legacy, and we appreciate the opportunity to share that with you today, and thank you for this recognition.
No, thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Rue, do you have another speaker?
No, go ahead.
Okay, if I could just jump in for a moment. I don't have the words to thank you for the service that you provide to all of us. I know that as a young father, there was a nurse, Lackner, from Kaiser, that I would just call personally, and I didn't even have to call the doctor. I had her phone number, and she would call me back, and she was phenomenal. The thing that amazes me about you guys, I don't care what's going on at a medical facility, what, how hectic or crazy it is, it's your calming voice that makes the patients feel calm. And to the individuals that are here from Linwood, from St. Francis, I personally was there just two weeks ago, and there was a patient who was suffering from kidney issues or something like that, and her daughter was there, and her daughter had some mental challenges, and the way the nurses worked to kind of keep her, it was an amazing thing that I saw. So I wish you the best, and know that if there's anything that, that we can do to show our support, we're open to do that. Can we give these great men and women another round of applause?
Thank you so much.
They're the backbones, backbone of the hospital.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, and I just want to just reiterate that, you know, when we go to our doctors, we may maybe see the doctor for about 10 minutes, 10, 15 minutes. It's the nurses who first welcome us. It's the nurses who explain to us what the doctor actually said. It's the nurses who tell us about how to take the medication, how to do all the various exercises or whatever the doctor recommends, and it's the nurses who, who are welcoming from the beginning to the end. So I want to again thank the nurses and UNAC and Assemblywoman Gonzalez. But finally, I'd like to present this resolution from the City of Los Angeles declaring National Nurses Week across the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so very much, nurses.
And Mr. O'Farrell, when Mr. Rue takes his party in the back, then the floor will be yours. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just to, I wanted to just acknowledge a couple of folks who are in the audience right now. We have several remarkable students from the UCLA Luskin School, Claudia Bautista, Emily Padilla, Catherine Harrow, and Yasina Garcia. They're all pursuing, excuse me, stand up, guys, they're all pursuing Masters in Social Welfare. Claudia is actually one of my wife's mentees at the school, and they're here to learn a little bit about what we're doing today. So thank you, guys, for being here.
We can all fit through here. I'm gonna go ahead and start. So colleagues, our colleague, Paul Krikorian, after weeks of round-the-clock budget work, budget and finance work, he... budget and finance work, he regrettably couldn't be here today because he's home recuperating, and hopefully he'll get some rest over the weekend so that we can start up again on Monday and wrap up the budget. So I am very honored to stand in for him on this presentation celebrating Goodwill of Southern California. We're here to honor their outstanding organization that embodies the spirit, the spirit of community leadership. For 103 years, Goodwill's invaluable dedication and exemplary contributions to the people of Southern California and to the city of Los Angeles have played a significant role in our communities. Goodwill has deep roots in the history of Los Angeles, 103 years. In Southern California, the first Goodwill was established by Catherine Higgins, who came to Los Angeles by train with her widowed mother in 1916. She was called "The Angel of the Plaza" because she began Goodwill in the heart of LA on Marchesso Street, which is the north side of the plaza that runs into Olvera Street. Higgins gathered large burlap coffee sacks to collect goods and sell them in its very first store. Today, Goodwill Southern California operates over 80 stores, 46 attended donation centers, three campuses, five career resource centers, and three work source centers throughout Los Angeles, including north of Rosecrans Avenue, the Riverside, and San Bernardino Counties. Now, we have a thriving, robust work source Goodwill Center in Glassell Park, which I was so thrilled to help dedicate and- back in 2013. They're also located, co- locate Big Brothers and Sisters of America there, and they also offer a community room, there are community meetings, and it really is a center of activity for Glassell Park there on San Fernando Road. Since its humble beginnings, Goodwill Southern California's mission has always been to transform lives through the power of work, and through their work, they serve individuals with disabilities and disadvantages by providing education, training, work experience, and job placement. Each year, Goodwill of Southern California prepares and places thousands of individuals into employment programs and services at its three campuses. And since we're endeavoring to really crack the code on homelessness and poverty, it couldn't be a better time for me to even reach further as the Chair of that committee. Not only does Goodwill Southern California empower individuals, they work with businesses on recruitment and partner with a community to host donation events, youth programs, and so much more. Through its environmental program, Goodwill of Southern California has recycled more than 100 million pounds of electronics, paper textiles, home goods, and continues to be an environmentally conscious partner. Goodwill has also been dedicated to serving our veterans. The Veteran Employment Program assists veterans to get back on their feet by offering career counseling, employment preparation courses, education and technical skill classes, as well as providing access to housing assistance, mental health services, and much more to help those who have served our country to secure meaningful work and advance beyond their military lives. Goodwill Southern California has also made a commitment to lead the Everyone Works Collaborative to place 15,000 homeless individuals into jobs throughout the city and county of Los Angeles. So colleagues, join me in honoring Goodwill of Southern California as we celebrate Goodwill Week for the organization's immeasurable contributions to our Southern California community and for their unyielding work to create a better, more vibrant Los Angeles for all Angelinos. How about a big round of applause for Goodwill?
Yes.
So with us today, amongst many others, is Patrick McLennahan. He's the President and CEO of Goodwill Southern California, who has been dedicated to the Goodwill mission and improving the lives of our community members throughout Los Angeles. Mr. McLennahan?
Mr. McLennahan, welcome, sir. We have the highest respect for you and your operation and bless you, just bless you.
Thank you. It is one of the truly great untold stories of the city of Los Angeles. From our beginnings on Olvera Street, we've always served people with barriers to employment. Most people know us for our stores and for our donation centers, but our stores are an incredible social enterprise that put people to work. Through that enterprise, we have- we have currently employed nearly 3,000 people that work for us, so we employ people directly, and then the proceeds from those stores, the profits, or we call it contribution, along with government funding, foundation gifts, individual incorporation gifts, go to serve our workforce and career development team that are passionate individuals, 200-strong, that counsel, train, place, and coach people with barriers to get on a path, many of them from hopeless to hopeful, in transforming their lives through the power of work. We value our partnership with the city greatly. We operate a funded work source center. We operated a city-funded U Source Center. We are the employer and trainer of record for the- What? No, no, no. Sorry. And then we also are engaging in a great P3 project with Councilmember Gil Sadio that you're gonna hear a lot more about. So we've been great partners. The tapping the talents of unique populations is our initiative. Everyone Works is our campaign, and that starts with the understanding that everyone has talent, everyone has value in our community, and if we work closely together, we can put that talent to work. With me today is Stephanie Medina, our Head of Community Relations and Public Affairs, Patrick Roche, our Head of Development, Simon Lopez, our Head of Workforce and Career Development, and Bobby May. Bobby May is our Ambassador to Skid Row, and Bobby May, we need 100 more Bobby May's. Bobby grew up in the foster program, fell out, was emancipated at an early age, gravitated towards Skid Row because that's where he could find food. He lived on Skid Row for 35 years. We were looking for someone who could be our ambassador, identified people on Skid Row who have given the opportunity to work and train, could- we could employ. Bobby has worked for us for two years. He has a roof over his head for he and his young son. He has served personally over 700 people on Skid Row through work source services. So I want to end by, please thank Bobby May for the great work that he does. Thank you all.
And wait a minute, sir. Mr. McLennahan, come- come back for a second.
Yes.
How's your son Eric?
My son Eric is great.
The quarterback at Loyola, Cubs. That's where I knew that I remembered you from. I have a Cub up here, sitting with my left, that played with your son. So let's give Loyola and Bobby a round of applause.
Thank you.
Give him our best, please.
I will, and when I couldn't remember something, it was the work source center, I don't know, I mean, the Clean Water, no. Refresh Bot, I'm sorry. The Refresh Bot, where we train and place people on Skid Row in the position of the janitorial crew and then place them outside on their way to transform their lives. So anyway, thank you, go Cubs.
Good work, go Cubs.
We're good?
Yes.
All right, so thank you and congratulations, Goodwill, on 103 years of a robust presence in Los Angeles. Thank you for all of your community partnerships. We highly value what you do, and we're all in this together in terms of helping those less fortunate. Thank you, and may God bless.
Give him another round of applause.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what do we have before us?
Mr. President, that would bring us to general public comment for item not on council's agenda.
Very good. Sean Murphy, come on up. Good morning and welcome. Be followed by Herman. One minute, one minute. Hold on, Sean. Let's actually, let's knock out the multiple items.
Multiple items.
So Sean, you pulled a card for item number seven.
Yeah.
And then you'll also have one minute on seven and one minute on general public comment.
Yeah, okay.
And Mr. President, before Mr. Murphy begins, amending motions 6A and 6B have been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Okay, Sean, so since six is on the agenda here, you're gonna have one minute on six.
So seven and six?
Six, seven, and one minute on general public comment.
Okay. Item number seven, I'm for. Item number six, I'm for. Give me general public comment.
Given his one minute, please, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. The company that owns my apartment building, I suggest you don't move in there. They're not doing anything, all they care about is money. That's when I'll be going to an- I'll be moving to the third district in 30 days. Hope this weather gets better, that's all I can say.
Herman, you're up. Two minutes on six, item six and seven, then you'll have one minute of general public comment.
Well, the clock has started, and because of the mayor and the legislative analyst report, prior plan and consideration of the 2019, 2020, I understand that if a public hearing is not held in committee, just like you wiped out all the other items that we are unable to speak on, you violate the Brown Act. So the opportunity for public comment will be not provided. So that substantiates an issue whether or not criminals continue to violate the civil rights of the Brown Act 54950 to 54963, considering that housing committees' reports substantiate whether or not HHH money is not being abused. And so far, the LA Times and other articles in the news have reported that homeless people seem to be an apparent problem of misuse, abuse, and waste of state and federal dollars for mixed use. So, so if you want a hyperlink to go to, why don't you just set your hyperlink to the mayor and that of the chief legislative, under 42 USC 1983 and 42 USC 12101 ET SEQ, and the Ban Act, and the Baby King Act of 2004, and the American Disability Act? Fuck you, Mayor Eric Garcetti, on behalf of public interest, you dumb motherfucker.
Okay, give him his one minute, please.
So just the other day, I was asked to report up there to the courts, and I was in room division 621, very good judge, William F. Frey, and we had a discussion about a public comment in Department 170516, 2019, 8:30 a.m. that's coming up regarding the law firm of Burke at 440 South Flower Street, Suite 2400, and you can call and figure this out, 1-213-236-0600. Criminal investigation, criminal investigation under the FBI, the defendant Jose Weezaar, once again Carmen M. Aguavo, criminal investigation, go to 1576 Ventura Boulevard, Encino 91436. Thank you. God bless.
Okay, your time is up. Eric Previn? Is Eric Previn in the room? Please come forward. So you also pulled items six and seven, you'll have two minutes to speak on both items, followed by one minute of general public comment.
Okay, thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. Now, I've been trying to learn about item number six because it's a fairly, it involves HUD, and as I mentioned the other day, there was a recount, and now it seems like some of the money is coming forward. 6A and 6B, boy, there, I gotta tell you, the coding is at a very high level today. Mr. Buscagno, good job by Avak and the team at CLR, the City Clerk. I mean, this is, this is dense stuff. We're amending, one seems perfectly innocuous, where we're approving one project coordinator and one project assistant position in lieu of recommendation number seven in the Housing Committee report, but what Housing Committee report, you know, comes to mind? Thank you, Mr. Rue, for that one. And then item 6B, I believe you're amending to adopt the following additional recommendations. This basically summarizes, $150,000, Mr. Price would like it to be, throw it on the pile of $450,000 for a library, Vermont Square Library, subject to eligibility, sorry, determination for CD BG funds. And then finally, of course, authorize H Sid to reflect these adjustments and so on and so forth. This is Rushmore Cervantes. That guy is extremely busy, and he was raising the possibility of, rather than filling many of the positions that they have and need, maybe we could just keep contracting it out, duck for a few more years while the public grows furious about the lack of stock and stuff, and then see if we can get by without bulking up. Now, bulking up is to be done only with Bloomingfield's assent. He's in a close conference with Sharon So about how delighted he is that Krikorian successfully cut the budget hearings by six full days or more, and we won't hear from him.
Okay, give him his one minute for general public comment.
The general public comment is very simple for Mr. Wesson. I know he's running for county supervisor, and he's doing his best to bring down all sorts of groups, you know, to show his love as he gathers support. We also took note of the David Zahnizer article, but, you know, the real low-hanging fruit, sir, is the way he runs public meetings, and the public is not stupid. So whereas there are a lot of city insiders who are happy to get along, Bonin and Corretts are linking closely right now on the subject, you know, and just go for Wesson if they can possibly pull it off, all the Teflon arguments that he makes, but it's totally unacceptable. And he's put together a team who are willing to just put the pedal to the metal on limiting public input, and that is totally and completely outrageous. Tag Krikorian, the idea of a special meeting with one agenda item for a 38-department, $10.6 billion budget. You can laugh all you want, sir, it's totally and wildly outrageous. So the public would simply ask Mr. Wesson to change the rules, follow the Brown Act, and let somebody mind the time on this, God damn it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, let's now take item number six. Item six is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
We'll approve item six as amended. Let's now take item number seven, members. Item number seven is now before us. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's send item seven forthwith, please.
Very good, sir.
Okay, now let's turn back to general public comment. Members of the public are reminded, you have one minute to speak on general public comment. Philberto Garcia. Philberto Garcia, good, good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm currently a driver for Firefly in the city of Los Angeles and Long Beach. Firefly is very important to me because it helps put foot in my house and helps me pay my bills. Things are so expensive here in LA. I've lived here my entire life, the cost of living, and everything in between has skyrocketed in the recent years. Drivers and people like myself need Firefly to help with the cost of living and other things. I work full- I work full-time, and the gig economy today is a very crucial and needed platform for myself and others. Families, people, students, and many others rely on this for work and income, especially myself. Taking Firefly away will hurt a lot of drivers. I would definitely recommend Firefly to other drivers as it helps me make my car payment every month. In return, it makes my life and I'm sure other drivers' lives a bit easier to survive the brutal cost of living here in Los Angeles. We cannot allow a ban to happen, it will be devastating to hundreds of drivers, including myself. With proper legality, code, and regulation, I'm confident we can pull through this hurdle and set a goal for the future. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Major Dotson, followed by Burke Wells. Good morning.
My name is Major Dotson. I'm here to also talk about Firefly. Technology interface to attain goods and services is smart, and right now, in the City of Los Angeles, we have smart ads that are available to customers, to Los Angelenos, and we ask the City Council not to put a ban on such smart advertising. It makes Los Angeles smart. When you go to Shibuya, Tokyo, you get off the plane, you see these kind of ads. You see these ads in big cities like Times Square. When you go in Times Square, you see these ads. We shouldn't be last in this kind of technology because we're Los Angeles, we lead in this technology in California, especially in Los Angeles. So, smart ads are for smart cities. If we don't do this, if we don't support this, we are a stupid city.
Thank you. Burke Wells? Burke Wells, general public comment? Okay, I don't see Mr. Wells. Tony Tucci, please come forward. Good morning.
Hello, Councilmembers. Tony Tucci, Chairperson of Citizens for LA Wildlife Claw, and my comments are directed to last Wednesday's Budget and Finance Committee meeting and the fact that we have a huge hiccup in our draft budget. The Hillside's wildlife corridors are in the, in the Planning Department's newsletter in the spring, however, there's no reference to it in the spring budget, and Councilmembers have the opportunity to right that wrong. However, it seems the Budget and Finance Committee is about to make a huge mistake. I'm speaking directly to the many Hillside Councilmembers in Budget and Finance. Sirs, if you are not making wildlife corridors a number-one priority in the budget, in this instance, you are derelict in your leadership. You are not authentically representing your constituents in the hillsides and your valuable natural resources. You, our Hillside leaders, can't publicly stand up for the environment without protecting our Santa Monica Mountains. And to the rest of the Councilmembers who might not preside over hillside areas, our mountains just don't belong to, to the wildlife, they belong to all of us.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay, that concludes our general public comment segment. What's, what's now before us?
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Announcements? Okay, seeing adjourning motions, anyone? So I'll rise for adjourning motions. Start on my right. Adjourning motions, no? On my left, none? Okay, with that, we are now adjourned. Go forth and serve the great City of Los Angeles. Thank you.[1757.63]